Thank you. Do me a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District 1, Mrs. Runyon?
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lloyd? District 3, Mrs. Tick?
Here.
District 4, Mr. Mason? District 5, Mr. Clay?
Here.
District 6, Mr. Schopfer? District 7, Mrs. Comer?
Here.
District 8, Mr. Fox?
Sir.
We have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a, um, a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you, ma'am.
Second. Any discussion? Although in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Very good. Citizen comments, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Polly? I believe they are present. Someone else was late. This, uh, this Haggis Wood, are you here?
Yes.
Haggis, that is you.
Just a second. So, just, good evening, September 4th. My name is Dana Haggis, and I've been selected to serve as the annual treasurer for Halifax County. I've been in the treasurer's office for the past eight years, so I've had the privilege of working with you all and, you know, making process as more efficient and effective. Um, as a parent, with two children in high school, one in middle school and one in elementary school, our school system is there and here to my heart. Um, I'm truly invested in its success, not just professionally but partially. So, I look forward to continue to work together, and I'm here to help any anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Dr. Huskin, have some comments for us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just excited to see so many of you here this evening, and greetings to all of you that are joining us virtually as always. Good evening to just everyone. I'd like to begin this evening just by discussing this past week. It truly has been one of the most difficult weeks in our division's history. It's one that has tested our strength, our faith, and our unity. And yet, through every challenge, I have witnessed the most remarkable courage and compassion. And it has reminded me exactly why I am so proud to serve this community. The week began with a heartbreaking loss of a four-year-old student, Salah Leanne Comer. She was a precious student at South Austin Learning Center. Her joyful little spirit, I had just been in her class just a few days before that. Her joyful spirit and her little smile, she touched everyone who knew her. Her passing, it's, it's just left a fun, just unfulfilling space in our hearts. That little girl loved dinosaurs, and she just loved everyone, and she loved Frozen, Let It Go, and all of that. But as we were grieving that loss, our division was hit by full-scale cyber attack from outside criminals. In the middle of the night, our systems were disrupted. Our staff was faced with challenges that could have halted instruction. And it didn't, not at all. They pivoted instantly, kept on teaching, found creative ways to just minimize all of that. Our small and mighty IT department, led by Dr. Hawkes, alongside with a dedicated team of cybersecurity professionals, and they went to work within fifteen minutes. And that, I'm not exaggerating that. It was just that fast. They've been working night and day to restore our systems. And they've done so with grace, humility, and excellence. Well then, as the week closed, our hearts were again heavy with the news of a tragic bus accident that claimed the life of a pedestrian. Each one of these events, on its own, would have been enough to shake our community. To face all three of those challenges in the same week, which seems almost impossible. But yet, here's what I saw. In the face of each and every trial, was the strength of our Halifax County Schools family. Central office staff, you've been absolutely in crisis management, and you have done an incredible job. I've seen teachers stepping up again and again to support one another. Principals, you have provided calm, steady leadership. Staff, you have been just comforting children, managing your own, just all over, just your own emotions, which are just everywhere. Community members, over and over, just checking in, offering help, showing up with your hearts wide open. You know, one of the best pieces of advice I've ever received was surround yourself with great people, and then just keep supporting them. This week, I was reminded again and again and again, we have great people here in Halifax County. As your superintendent, I just want to say from the deepest part of my heart, thank you. Thank you for your courage, thank you for your compassion, thank you for keeping our children at the center of every decision. And though our hearts are heavy, I hold firmly to the promise that I find in the comfort of Psalms. Chapter thirty, verse number five. Some of you all have held on to this verse with me. Weeping, you say it with me if you want to, weeping may endure for a night, and what happens, y'all? Joy comes in the morning. Brighter days are ahead for us. We continue, we're gonna continue to pray for Salah's family, and we're gonna continue to pray for the staff and students at the Early Learning Center. And they're gonna create a new normal for everyone, and so, we're gonna continue to pray for everyone that's been impacted by this bus accident. Chairman Mason, I know my remarks have been a little longer than usual tonight, but my heart just needed to say this. Halifax family, I see you. I see your work. Please know your dedication matters, because Halifax is stronger because of every single one of you.
We have you, we have everybody. It was a trying week on, on many, many fronts, on many fronts. So, um, good evening again, everybody. You know, with everything else going on, several other things continue to happen, unfortunately. Uh, we had many battles that we were, that we were fighting long before last week started, so. One of those due to the unwillingness of the board supervisors to meet with me, our finance director, and the superintendent. By noon was booked at the end of last month's meeting, we directed our attorney to send the board supervisors a request to set up a meeting to review funds that are in our account that will be available to spend on this sports complex project. Just to be clear, our board spending money that has already been allocated will not raise anyone's tax base. We're just gonna review our accounts and see what would be available. I'm happy to report, Ms. Morgan, the interim finance director, did reach out to Dr. Buckloo and me as been scheduled for upcoming in, in very near future, in very near future. That is great, great news, great news. I detailed at our last meeting, um, the conversation the chairman Clayburn and I had, and the way that it ended was not maybe a, a good end to, to, to our conversation, but, um, and I told Mr. the chairman at the time that my phone line was open, and I was ready to talk. He did not contact me. However, some of you may have seen, I did receive a odd text from supervisor Riddle. It says, for those, uh, that are joining us virtually, "Good morning. If you or your crew want a meeting with Ms. Morgan, you will follow protocol and call Mr. Clayburn or myself." And then he had his little dot that we all know was a period, and then he spells out period. I'm not really sure why, and wishes me a good day. So, interesting. Not really a great message, but that's okay. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, when the, when the meeting was set up, did, Dr. Buckloo put you on the spot here? Did you go through any protocols to, to set up the meeting? I mean, I'm old enough to remember, like, a year and a half ago, when we wanted a meeting with the, with the county administrator, we'd do this crazy thing like, pick up the phone and ask for it, or maybe send an email.
Yes.
Did you have to learn a secret handshake or anything for the meeting that you have coming up?
No, sir.
No, you didn't?
Just leave them.
Interesting. It's homeless, like he's making up things so we don't have to meet. Almost, I don't know, I don't know. But if you are thinking that maybe we'll be secretive and going behind the chairman's back to set up a meeting, Dr. Hawkes, if you could go to the next slide. That's a screenshot. You sent a message from me at the top, "Good morning, let's meet September 8th at 2:30." Ms. Morgan confirms the meeting. Chairman Clayburn, work's fine for me. Looks like I followed the mystery protocols that I didn't know anything about, but. Anyway, that meeting was deemed unnecessary by our five chairmen, so. Anyway, I wish you luck in, uh, in the meeting very soon. Again, I don't think it's a tremendous ask for us to review our finances, and you're on the same page, but. By day, Mr. Riddle was, was, was pretty active, though. He, he didn't stop there. If you wondered what he thought of our school system. This is on Facebook. So, this is a post that is drawing attention to homeschool, and the post is in favor of homeschooling, and that's probably that's what you want to do. And again, for those that, that can't read that, Pete Riddle, supervisor from District 1, I didn't say all that, but that's who he is. Bingo. The public school system is horrible. Quite a statement from an elected official. Dr. Huskin, how many invitations has Mr. Riddle had to come out to a school, a high school?
We invited twice to come see to the high school.
I've seen zero kind of player, has he?
Uh-huh.
Zero, okay. Yeah. So, just as I said at the last meeting to Chairman Clayburn, my phone line is open. And to Mr. Riddle, um, we'd be glad to give you a tour. You've got one of our fine elementary schools in your district. We'll give you a tour of the high school. It's gonna involve you slowly stepping away, we keep forward, that was just a video, but, uh, we'll be glad to meet and, uh, and give you a tour, and I promise I will not bring up, maybe thirteen or fourteen times, we need to look at those accounts together. On a more serious note, last month, last week, excuse me, was, was a lot on, on many levels. As, uh, as superintendent said, you all did a tremendous job persevering through the, through the cyber mess. Uh, thank you, Dr. Hawkes. I believe everything is now currently pretty much back on the line. Yes, close. Put you on the spot, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, we're just very limited in information we can provide, but we are fully restored with internet.
Got you, okay.
There are other processes and things that have not been restored yet.
Okay. Slowly but surely, everything will get back on line, and this is your pass. Again, I just want to commend you all for the job that you did. Again, our hearts break for the families that were affected by the tragedies last week. But to the employees, any of the students, thank you all for your patience, and the employees, thank you for what you did. Why should I play?
I'm good. Don't want to waste.
I want to show the man, so.
Yeah, ready to go. Mr. Lopez, student representative. Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, and all other school board members. As the week begins to charge and the policies settle to end, Halifax County High School was buzzing with energy and enthusiasm. This month, our students will fully embrace school spirit, coming together to celebrate what makes a school a vibrant and proud community. From hands-on classroom projects, spirited athletic adventure, and with creative club activities to all varsity student decorated displays, every part of the school radiates energy, teamwork, and common pride. And it's clear that, that this community thrives on connection, support, and shared achievement. Students are gearing up for homecoming this Saturday, filling the halls with colors, chants, and displays that capture the pride and excitement of the Commons. This October, as students gear up for homecoming, they're also honoring Cancer Awareness Month, where ingredients, organizing fundraisers, and creative projects that highlight awareness and support those in perpetuity. From classroom discussions to club initiatives, the comments are showing that school pride goes hand-in-hand with community impact and caring for others. The varsity football team went three to three this season so far, with key wins over Dan River, Tunstall, and Mecklenburg County. Despite losses to Brookville and Gretna, the team has shown steady improvement in defense and teamwork. The varsity volleyball team earned solid wins against George Washington and Orange County, but faced tough losses to Mecklenburg, Tunstall, and Magnavista. They continue to show effort and progress with stronger serves and defense each game. The cross-country team finished fourth at the Evans Park Home Meet. They placed second at Smith River Complex, next Magnavista in our upward stride, building momentum for the rest of the postseason. Commons golf team dominated the sub-region with a 295 score, securing their top finish of the season. And at the Region 4D Tournament, held at Ivy Health Golf Club, Owen Mason's 270-par earned of medalist honors in state berth, but the rest of the team also posted solid scores. High school students have been actively engaged in a variety of clubs, demonstrating leadership, service, and school spirit. Elsa has hosted health awareness activities and community service projects. Yolke's Up has led campaigns on substance misuse prevention and mental health. SCA has organized homecoming preparations and spirit events, and Peer Mediation has promoted conflict resolution and a positive school climate. Together, these groups highlight the student's education, teamwork, and commitment to making a meaningful impact on their school and community. This month exemplifies the energy, creativity, and compassion of the fine Halifax County High School. Whether through academics, athletics, club initiatives, or community service, our students are making a meaningful impact while celebrating their common pride, showing that the students are thriving, and that they belong to a connected community where every student contributes to a spirit of success and harmony. Thank you.
Thank you, Lopez, as always, thank you. Committee reports.
Were two of y'all on the spot, have a nice committee this afternoon?
Yes.
Any fun, exciting news?
Just paid for the bills. Dr. Buckloo had everything lined out for us. We on the same page as we were last year. Once insurance kicks in, we probably may be under a little bit, but everything looks good and moving forward.
Miss Comer, anything, that good? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Fox.
Hey, look, I heard insurance kicks in, what happened to your insurance?
So, we had an accident, well, it wasn't an accident, it was a chimney element that little school had to be replaced. And so, we had to take it down, um, which was an expensive amount of cost, but due to our good staff, they had insurance in place, and, um, I made this crew, got everything together, and it's gonna save us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars due to insurance.
Very good. Very good. Oh, I guess you?
Okay, so, it is, um, time for VSBA recognitions, and many of you have earned these recognitions for your participation and your continuing education, so I am going to give you your achievements. So, our board chair has earned his bronze achievement for Chairman Mason, and I'm trying to make it, does it say specifically? Okay, you earn, um...
That sounded like it was well enough to give you the gold.
No, you did not earn the gold this time. You earned twenty-four credits, you have to earn twenty-four credits to earn the bronze, so congratulations, Chairman Mason.
Thank you.
And, yes, yes, absolutely. Also earning bronze is, is Runyon, also earning bronze. So, earning silver, to earn silver, you have to earn forty-eight credits. Silver, we have silver medalists, and that is Miss Comer.
Miss Comer.
And excellent. And Miss Hicks, also a silver medalist. And I told you this is even, she is also a silver medalist, I'll say that. These are, um, with recognition without a pin, we have Mr. Fox. And then finally, he has earned VSBA recognition. And Miss Rice has earned recognition. Miss McKenney has earned recognition. And I don't know what I did, but apparently I've done enough to earn eighty-four credits, and I'm a gold medalist with the... I'm already on the gold. Oh, Jimmy. Jimmy was stuck to Mr. Fox. Jimmy Clay, you are also an award of recognition winner.
You and Mr. Fox stayed together much of the time.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Garble, I wasn't ready for you.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, Chairman Hudson, both group members. Um, what I'm doing tonight is kind of an annual update, I think I was here last August, I'm a little behind this year, but, uh, kind of annual update, I wouldn't make the call, I've been doing this year. Um, our goal is for our schools to be safe, efficient, fully operational, learning environment, support students in our staff. Not only do we keep our schools fully operational, but we also perform updates on, on all our buildings. And sometimes it was small projects, sometimes it was large projects, but constantly doing updates on buildings, trying to keep them up. And so, I've listed a few projects that have completed this year. This is not all, this is just a few of the major projects we've got. At Clay's Mill, we've added a much-needed second drinking water rail, as we've had to close the school a couple times due to lack of water. We've added a driveway at Clay's Mill, so the afternoon traffic on the block roadway. We installed column and oxide, LPG gas detectors in all our schools that use oil or gas. This is monitored by our fire alarm system, so if it picks up any level of column oxide, LPG gas, it notifies two of us in maintenance department. But a high level will sound the fire alarm in the building, very good safety feature. We've added security vassals for three of our schools, High School, Center, and County House. Just extra layer of another set of doors that the public has to come through, which gets a good extra layer of security. We've added security chain link fences to three of our schools, Center, and County House, and South Austin. We're in the process of seeing if we can add fences to more of our elementary schools. And we've had to make changes to our intruders and fire alarm systems. The landlines, let everybody know, that we can depend on. So, we, we had to change, what was the IP and cell phone, I was about to settle back up. Chimney at the middle school was severely damaged by lightning. We had to lower that down to a safe level, just above the roof, and cap that off. And it's had a lot of backup insurance, which we got very fortunate on that. We had central HVAC installed inside our diesel. This is the final step, having central air, central heat and air in all our schools. So, we got all our schools up to date on that. We're in the process of selling all the surplus items that left our old house with. That's being handled by an auction site called Good Deals. So, if you need to go on Good Deal's website, look up if you're auctioning this stuff off. And on September thirtieth, we sold seventy-nine items at a price of sixty thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Every ten days, we had another twenty-five items, it's just, it's a constant flow. So, it's also a good start, we still got a lot to do. Other than doing projects on the deal, we, we also must maintain the day-to-day maintenance. Now, when I come here in '01, I had a field that was twenty-one for us, and I've actually found another update that was twenty-three for us in maintenance department. And now, due to cutbacks over the years, it was seventeen of us, that's included administrative assistant and myself. August of last year up to August this year, we completed five thousand two hundred and forty-one workforce. When you do the math, you got seventeen people. Nobody's sitting around looking something, which they better do. We have a very good maintenance, maintenance team, I'm really proud of. This is just a summary of technical year for us. Any other questions?
Not really a question, but a comment, that surplus, I mean, that's largely some items that were probably at the trash can.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, that's...
And, and it's a, it's a nationwide option, we have people coming from Turkla, Pennsylvania, coming to get items, so.
Very good. Any other questions, Mr. Garble?
No questions.
Yes, ma'am, Miss Comer.
Thank you. I see, just riding around during the day, I see your guys out all day, constantly in motion, so it shows that you guys are very, very much appreciated for everything that you do to keep us running smoothly and efficiently. So, thank you, and send our, our thanks to the rest of your staff, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garble. Appreciate it, thank you. Yes, Miss Poole, a phrase.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, Dr. Huskin, and other board members. My name is Katie Poole, and I'm the principal at Cluster Springs Elementary for our extraordinary staff. Work to build better Bulldogs each and every day. This year, our division-wide theme, "Shaping the Future One Masterpiece at a Time," has truly resonated throughout CSCS. At our school, we have always prided ourselves on providing hands-on, creative learning experiences that engage students and make learning meaningful. But this year, our teachers have fully embraced this theme in ways that are so inspiring to students. At this time, I'd like to recognize our incredibly hardworking and talented teachers and staff who do that for the school. Each week during our PLC meetings, these teachers come together not only to review data and plan instruction, but to highlight and celebrate the innovative lessons happening in their classrooms. These sessions have become a showcase of creativity, whether it's a science experiment that turns the classroom into a lab, a literacy lesson brought to life through drama or art, or math concepts explored through real-world problem solving. Our students are not just learning content, they're actively creating, problem-solving, and discovering their unique talents. I'd like to invite some of them now to share with you what creativity and innovation needs today.
Hi, my name is Kate Grubbs, and I am a fifth grader and SCA president. As CSCS creatively innovates and runs for office using our ideas and forces to make our school a better place for everyone.
Several weeks ago, a group of future leaders nominated by their peers bravely ran for the Student Council Association offices of President, Vice President, Treasurer, Secretary, and Sergeant-at-Arms. Led by SCA advisor, Mrs. Michelle Weddle, these students designed campaign posters with catchy slogans to make themselves visible, which they proudly hung in the hallways during their campaigns. In addition, they wrote speeches which they delivered in front of their peers. Throughout the election process, these students demonstrated creativity, courage, and leadership while setting a wonderful example of what it means to step up and serve our school community.
Hi, my name is Lisa. I am a fifth grade student in Mrs. Clark and Mrs. Tucker's class at Cluster Springs Elementary School. Creativity and innovation means using technology to make our ideas to life and turning our imagination into ones.
A group of our fifth grade girls led by our ITRT, Susan Elliott, participate weekly in the Girls Who Code Club. This program encourages girls to think outside of the box, design unique solutions, and build original projects using technology and coding skills. It's about transforming ideas into tangible digital creations, whether that's in apps, games, websites, or programs that solve real-world problems. Recently, these students have been using their...
And we're so grateful for your support as well as we continue to shape bright futures for our students when that's reached that time.
Thank you. Great job, everybody.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Huskin, and board members. I'm just bringing tonight an update on school nutrition. It's all just good information just to let you know the improvements that we have made over the summer and brought them into our school area. Over the summer, our staff participated in the Culinary Institute of America in KIIN, combination with the BDEOE. They spent five hours under professional development to learn more about how to make scratch-made foods that are more appealing, fresh tasting, and healthy for our students. And with that training, they've incorporated multiple updated snacks and menu items for students to enjoy. We have seen that the students are loving, next slide please, our new packaging and display of food. This picture represents, kids love getting their foods in little boxes. They're like all over it, it's more like a lunchbox, so we're making it and it's a lot of homemade with the parfaits and smoothies and build-your-own pizza and it's just hands-on, fresh salads. Kids are going crazy over it, they love it. And we're really proud of the way the food is looking at each of our sites. So we're doing this from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. This is some of our shots in our new high school on our new serving lines. You can see how fresh it looks and we don't have any leftovers anymore. We have seen a sixty-three percent increase in participation at our high school. And I contribute that to our new building and the displays that we're able to put off for the students in our new building. The location of the cafeteria is much more accessible and much more friendly for our students, and they are just loving the environment. In the next slide, we have introduced second chance breakfast. And we get to take our carts throughout the building and in between class change or any students that are coming in late can pick this up. It's totally free of charge, there's no charge at all for the students. Adults, we would have to charge, but the students get a deal-up smoothie and a graham cracker packet or some carrots. We have to have that to add to make it a whole meal, but they are just loving this. We do different flavors, we have strawberry, blueberry, peach, and in the month of October, we'll have a green one called the whole. So we are just super excited about what we're able to offer. And again, we are fully free of charge for all our students for breakfast, lunch, and after-school snacks, which I'll take you to speak about. So I want to make sure that staff know they're also invited to eat in our cafeteria. Unfortunately, we can't offer free meals to our staff, but we have substantially low prices for a whole meal. Breakfast is $2.90 for any staff member or parent, and lunch is $4.90. You can't go in your car and get a meal for anywhere near these low prices. So we also, with that price, give adult-sized servings, so it's not the student size, it is the adult size. And I just be putting it out there because we do get a lot of questions, can we get a discount? Can we get it free? But I just want to let you know, these are substantially lower prices for our staff. So if you don't have cash, you can have an account, throw your money on that account and use it as the month goes by. So we just want to let all our folks know, you're welcome to come and enjoy. You can get out of cart, you can get snacks, you can get whatever you see, you can purchase. Next slide, we're also engaging beautiful water stations in our schools. We're continuing this on from last year, and the cafeteria and staff are doing a beautiful job of getting these out there, making them colorful. They change it up between berries to citrus, and over here you've got mint and lemon. And it's just clean, beautiful water that's available for students and staff, completely free of charge. And we encourage everyone to just take carton, stay hydrated. So I wanted to give you just a little rundown of how we feel this has impacted school nutrition and some of the offerings that we want to make sure all of our students are aware of. First quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year, we have seen in the breakfast alone eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-one more meals served. The students are partaking in our breakfast. For lunch, we've seen an increase of sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven meals. So that's the first quarter, first day of school till the last day of September. And we offer dinner at our after-school programs, and we've seen an uptick of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight for that. We've added this year after-school snacks, mainly at the high school level, so that our athletes and any students staying after school for tutoring, they can get a free after-school snack. So we've done an uptick in the first, well, we don't have an uptick because this is the first time, but we've had two hundred and forty-eight students participate in the after-school snacks. In the high school alone, our breakfast served at our highest has been four hundred and eighty-nine. Last year, it stayed around two hundred. So we doubled how many students are getting nutritious meals. Lunch, we have maxed out at seven hundred and sixty-eight students getting lunch. Last year, it ranged between four and six hundred, so it just depended on what we were serving. We have the Philly sub line now, they build their own subs as well. We have pizza every day, we have, they love General Tso's Chicken, they just love it. So we are just really proud of what the school nutrition staff have been doing and the reception from the students. So we just wanted to share that with you so you all were aware of how we are growing in school nutrition. Were there any questions?
Any questions, Dr. Wilson?
No, this is my question, the comment, I looked at, just two days ago, I was seeing telephone calls and it was someone giving glowing remarks about how the quality of meals has improved over the last few years. So I was just on this run-in for years and years, we didn't always receive those calls, but I mean, we're gearing up. And I thought it was a very, very positive conversation, I just didn't see it.
That's wonderful, thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any comments, questions?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Wonderful, thank you.
If there was ever a presentation where samples or something sort of big used. I'm really disappointed, but it was great news other than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That's right, General Tso sounds pretty good about that. Ms. Bell? Oh, sorry, skip one, knock off.
And I just be putting it out there because we do get a lot of questions, can we get a discount? Can we get it free? But I just want to let you know, these are substantially lowered prices for our staff. So if you don't have cash, you can have an account, throw your money on that account and use it as the month goes by. So we just want to let all our folks know, you're welcome to come and enjoy, you can get out of cart, you can get snacks, you can get whatever you see, you can purchase. Next slide, we're also engaging beautiful water stations in our schools. We're continuing this on from last year, and the cafeteria and staff are doing a beautiful job of getting these out there, making them colorful. They change it up between berries to citrus, and over here you've got mint and lemon. And it's just clean, beautiful water that's available for students and staff, completely free of charge. And we encourage everyone to just take carton, stay hydrated. So I wanted to give you just a little rundown of how we feel this has impacted school nutrition and some of the offerings that we want to make sure all of our students are aware of. First quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year, we have seen in the breakfast alone eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-one more meals served. The students are partaking in our breakfast. For lunch, we've seen an increase of sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven meals. So that's the first quarter, first day of school till the last day of September. And we offer dinner at our after-school programs, and we've seen an uptick of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight for that. We've added this year after-school snacks, mainly at the high school level, so that our athletes and any students staying after school for tutoring, they can get a free after-school snack. So we've done an uptick in the first, well, we don't have an uptick because this is the first time, but we've had two hundred and forty-eight students participate in the after-school snacks. In the high school alone, our breakfast served at our highest has been four hundred and eighty-nine. Last year, it stayed around two hundred. So we doubled how many students are getting nutritious meals. Lunch, we have maxed out at seven hundred and sixty-eight students getting lunch. Last year, it ranged between four and six hundred, so it just depended on what we were serving. We have the Philly sub line now, they build their own subs as well. We have pizza every day, we have, they love General Tso's Chicken, they just love it. So we are just really proud of what the school nutrition staff have been doing and the reception from the students. So we just wanted to share that with you so you all were aware of how we are growing in school nutrition. Were there any questions?
Any questions, Dr. Wilson?
No, this is my question, the comment, I looked at, just two days ago, I was seeing telephone calls and it was someone giving glowing remarks about how the quality of meals has improved over the last few years. So I was just on this run-in for years and years, we didn't always receive those calls, but I mean, we're gearing up. And I thought it was a very, very positive conversation, I just didn't see it.
That's wonderful, thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any comments, questions?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Wonderful, thank you.
If there was ever a presentation where samples or something sort of big used. I'm really disappointed, but it was great news other than that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That's right, General Tso sounds pretty good about that. Ms. Bell? Oh, sorry, skip one, knock off.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Clay, Dr. Huskin, and board members. Before I begin this presentation, I want to thank y'all for the remarks about the cyber incident. And I just would be remiss if I did not also give a public thank you to everyone who's been so supportive and encouraging, to the team, the countless hours, I only have one here tonight, but all of them have just been wonderful, working long hours. We get messages all through the night from the specialists that we're working with, so our phones have been ringing all around the clock. And I want to publicly thank them, as well as the individuals in the schools, the ITRTs, the land managers, and all staff in general, because everyone did come together as a team and work together, and I couldn't be more proud, so, thank you. But tonight's purpose is to present our preliminary SOL test results. And as we go through, we're going to take a look at each content area in which you will see in front of you is, you will see the scores for the last four years, they are color-coded, blue, orange, green, and yellow. Last year's scores are the yellow, the last line for each school. And as you look across for reading, you will see that most schools did improve. We did have a couple, we dropped just a little bit, and that does happen from year to year. As you look across, you will see that because your student population varies as well as other circumstances for the year. Such as, one thing I will say, if you recall last year, we had a lot of flu. We had some colds, we had all kinds of incidents that could have impacted. So things do vary from year to year. But as we're looking at our reading growth, I really would like to point out some growth that we see here, looking at Scottsburg and Sydener Jennings. We had two schools that really showed a lot of growth in reading, and I definitely want to commend those staffs, the staff at those schools for what they're doing there. Other schools are also moving along, and we're very proud, we're proud of how all of them did, honestly. I, really, Dr. Huskin and I were talking about it today, we did a great job last year, and we are very proud of what we're doing. We're continuing to work, are we totally where we want to be? No, and as we go through that, you're going to see that throughout the presentation, but we are going to continue to work. Next, we're going to look at math. Again, we see some growth in our math, and just about every school, I think we only had like two schools that did have growth in math. And if we will specifically look at Meadville and again, Scottsburg, we saw tremendous growth in those two schools. One of the things that our instruction department does is, they have schools talk to each other. So when they have grade-level meetings, they will get teachers from this school to share what they did when they see a lot of growth like that. So we are continuing to work across the board to even raise our scores even higher. Next, we have science. Science is a little different beast, because at the elementary level, we only test one grade level of students, and that's our fifth graders. So the fifth graders alone carry the burden of science. And at the middle school, it's grade eight. Grade eight test covers grades six, seven, and eight science concepts. So these two schools, when you're looking at that, just keep that in mind. We are still working to improve on science, and we do have some work to do. If you recall last year, we talked about the science kits that have been provided to give more hands-on science, and you saw that tonight in this school's presentation that the kids weren't using that. We're seeing that in our walkthroughs, when we're doing walkthroughs, we're seeing students doing a lot of experiments, and we do believe that is one way, along with the alignment, to get these scores up, so that is our focus. But as you're looking across at the data, I hope you, your eyes with the cluster's frames there, we can see a huge gain, twenty points, that's significant for one year. So we are very pleased with that gain. Next, we're going to look at history. History, we need some work. History does not count as of today in our accreditation, so we think that's sometimes why our history is not as where we want it to be, but we do have some work to do, and we do plan to work on that, looking at our alignment, making sure that we are teaching the standards that we need to teach at the level that they need to be taught to them. But as you're looking across at the history, keep in mind, as with science, only one grade level takes the history test at the elementary school, that's fourth grade, and at the middle school, that's seventh grade. So those two grades carry the weight of the school again. If you will note though, we did have some growth. Look at Meadville, forty percent points increase, that's huge. Scottsburg had big growth, as well as Sydener Jennings. That is significant growth that we saw at those schools. We are continuing to work on history though. Next, we're going to talk about attendance. And if you recall, in previous years, we had talked about chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is defined by the state of missing ten percent or more of the school year. And with a normal one hundred and eighty-day school year, that would be eighteen days plus. So if a student misses eighteen-plus days, they are calculated into this number. It does not matter the reason they are not at school. Excused, unexcused, suspensions, all of it counts. Now, we've been looking for our lines to go up, but when we hit this, we want our lines to go down, okay? So as you look across, you want your yellow to be lower than the year before. Again, at the beginning, remember I talked about the sickness and things that we had? We had several outbreaks of flu at several of the schools that did impact attendance. But we also see some growth as you look across, across, or reduction, I should say, increase in students being in school. And one of the ones I really wanted to point out this evening was Sydener Jennings. When you look at Sydener Jennings, they went from a twenty-four percent chronic absenteeism rate last, year before lasted ten percent last year. That's huge. That was a major drop. At all of our schools, the administration and staff are continuing to work on efforts to try to reduce our chronic absenteeism. They're trying to come up with creative ways to encourage students to attend school or reward students for attending, for attending school with different kinds of events or incentives. So we are going to continue to work through that this year and try to improve our attendance even more because we do believe if you're in school, that's a start to finish scores up. Thank you all. And I will say that if you want to look at these and want to know any improvement quickly, you can go to the Virginia Department of Education's website and look at the school college profiles by the division and the school. And you can see all of these numbers and drill deeper into the different subgroups and things. There's more information there. And hopefully by next month, we will have our accreditation ratings, and I'll be able to share those with you as well.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Lee?
Yeah, thank you. I see you're tracking those schools. I was, I've been tracking those with the grade level. In one grade I've been watching is the fifth graders, which are the sixth graders. Because that was the first year COVID went, and they were kindergarten. So they missed, some of kindergarten, basically all first grade. So they got back into second grade and did no hard to rate. So I feel like that group got hit really hard with COVID, unfortunately, because Caltech closed for quite a bit of time. So I was looking at the fifth grade scores across a couple of schools, and it's like fifty-three, sixty, sixty-three, so they're quite a bit lower than these averages. So I'm wondering what the A's are doing. Or if there's anything that's, you know, to try and catch these kids up still because at some point that grade level still is never going to be high.
I don't want to speak for instruction, but I don't mind chiming in on some of the things. I know that when we're doing our classroom walkthroughs, we do look for alignment, making sure, as I was mentioning earlier, that it's aligned correctly to the standards, meaning that it's being taught at the level that it needs to be taught. Sometimes, you know, of course, when you first introduce a concept, you start at the basic level, but we need to make sure that we carry it to the level that it's being assessed at. And sometimes we don't. When we're teaching, we keep it at the basic level, and we need to take it until we apply it in all those level. Depending on the verb that you use by the state. So that's one of the things that we're doing. And specifically, we're talking about reading, and the state has a whole initiative with that. And we are working, as we get data on students, we have to do Virginia literacy plans on students that is almost similar to an IP, if you will. They have to put specific strategies, specific strategies and roles that they're using to work with individual students and work towards getting that student more prepared.
So I'm looking for, thinking about that. And those students now are sitting in our current sixth grade. So that, just specific things now, the Virginia Literacy Act has now moved to the middle school. So those kids are going to get those specific interventions now at the middle school that has been in the elementary school now. So the law actually has, has now said that, you know, there's the reading interventions and things that weren't in place now in the secondary level are now in place. And so just specific reading interventions at the middle school, reading coaches at the middle school because of, because of those things. And, you know, math coach as well. There's a math intervention at the middle school. Things that weren't typically in place at the secondary level, I do think, because of COVID.
Mr. Lloyd, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Al, just wanted to ask if we could have that presentation emailed to us as well. Just wanted to go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Grace?
How do we compare those around counties?
I'm going to be honest with you. I have one. I have one of them. I don't know if anybody else's, if we've been allowed to see anyone else's yet because it's all been in longer until.
Because if some things are on the website, I'll.
Well, they just laugh.
I have one.
You have a question?
Yeah. Understanding that COVID has been incorporated in this. How long did the COVID problem last too?
How long ago?
How long did it last? That's not a hard question.
The kids got it back full-time, like a year and a half later.
A year and a half later, so it, 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 it rolled on a year and a half. When is, that's, that's right before year, right? That's what we had asked. How long did the state get back to with all these incentive programs?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. How long is?
Well, you got the incentive program for, for the elementary school. Now you got it for the middle school. How long did it take you to get that from, from them, from the middle school? Want to say more?
I don't understand. I don't, I don't know. The incentives, I was talking about was with attendance.
I thought the gentleman was bringing what she was talking about, getting the grade levels back. But she, her question was specifically, what we're going to do about the fact that I've realized when it happens that these kids are going to come back two, three years behind. And what I wanted to know was, was the state doing its thing at that time to start before you to start recovering some of this?
Well, you remember that we have grant money in place for us to use for different programs. We are still getting some support with programs that students log into with virtual tutors and things like that, correct me?
Yes.
Ms. Miller, is this the last year for that?
This is the last year for that.
Yes. So this current school year will be the last year for that.
So that's twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-five, five years, four years? So we, we still got these kids behind. They, they still behind. We sit there and talk about this, talk about that, about that. They're still behind. These kids are hardly able to catch up. A whole lot of partners are behind. And I'm wondering, why is it taking so long for the state to get us some type of program? Not just for attendance, but for academia, where we can increase the score on that so we put so much interest in it and, you know, so. What is the solar check for that? No problem? Did I miss that? You know?
I, I'm not, I don't know the question.
Okay, the question is, why did it take the state so long? Well, I know you can't answer that. I know why it did because nobody had the brainstorm enough to go and do that. It would get everybody to do it the best way it could. That's what, what, to me, seemed like what happened. And what we've done is basically followed on with that. We've done a little bit of an attendance, but.
We have, and we use the programs that the state provides, yes. Our students do log in daily, depending on the needs of the students, to these programs to assist.
Okay, so if that's the case, and we do have, why in the devil are we getting canceled in twenty-six?
The less the funding is, I guess. I mean, we don't know well, I guess, at this point. It could, but as of today, it ends this year.
So if it's not you guys, that's the Department of Education's fault.
As far as the money that's being, you know, the program is being purchased, I guess that's where it's coming from.
Doing what?
The money for those programs, that's where it's coming from. It's purchased by the Department of Education.
So then, then I'd say that this series would take. Would sound like, we would think that willing to provide the money for us to get what we need so we can do all these other things, bring these kids up because we're behind.
And like I said, they could extend the money, but as of today, the money ends this year. A lot of changes come along.
Yeah.
What kind of change?
I don't know. I guess.
Okay, I thought you were.
Good evening. Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Clay, and the entire board, Dr. Huskin. Thank you for the opportunity to share our proposal this evening. And we do have samples for you, Ms. Mason.
Textbooks, just what I wanted.
When you do need the samples back and if you want to work them out, you can get samples too. It is my privilege to introduce the recommendation for the adoption of a new K through five mathematics textbook series. This proposal represents the collective effort of our educators who have carefully reviewed multiple math programs to ensure alignment with Virginia SOLs. Our goal throughout this process has been to identify high-quality instructional materials that support strong mathematics instruction. We also prioritize materials that promote student engagement, differentiation, and real-world problem solving while providing teachers with resources that are flexible and easy to handle. This adoption is timely as we continue to align our K-five math instruction with the update of Virginia math standards, which empathize deeper understanding of the scores and application of mathematical concepts. The selected materials will help ensure that all students across every elementary classroom have access to consistent, rigorous, and engaging math learning experiences. I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Francine Davids, our coordinator of elementary instruction, who will share details about the review committee's work and the specific textbook series our team has recommended for adoption. We thank you for your continued commitment to providing our teachers and students with the best possible tools for learning.
Good evening. So I'm going to give an overview of the math textbook adoption process to ensure a collaborative and inclusive process. These are the following steps that we took. First, we formed a math textbook adoption committee. The committee included representatives from all of our elementary schools. And the two largest schools, they had two representatives on the committee. Each representative was responsible for leading the process within the building. This included setting up the review stations to the textbooks, explaining the process to the faculty and staff, collecting feedback, and bringing all feedback and the rating scores of the textbooks we reviewed to the committee. Also, we reviewed different correlations. We reviewed the VDOE math textbook review committee correlations of the different textbooks. Also CIP textbook committee correlation reports were reviewed before we selected the three textbooks from the VDOE approved textbook list. And we closely evaluated KIDAM, SABAS, and HAA for the three textbook vendors that we reviewed. Each textbook was assessed using a consistent framework that considered the level of evidence supporting its effectiveness of the standards by grade level. And we rated it by being adequate, limited, or no evidence found. We also participated in various textbook meetings with different textbook companies. The CIP math textbook committee meetings, we get those monthly, as well as planning and development council for region A textbook meetings. We also attended all those. These meetings gave us an in-depth understanding of how each program supports our instructional goals and standards of alignment within the textbooks. We did open review and collective feedback. We displayed the selected textbook sample materials at each of the elementary schools, and they were on display from March, around the end of March through May. We encouraged review and collaboration across stakeholders. Our gen ed teachers, special education teachers, instructional coaches, math specialists, parents could go in, community members could go in and review the textbooks if they chose. Then the collection of all the feedback came back to our textbook committee. The ratings, and that's how we came to our final proposal here tonight, KIDAM math for our elementary schools that rated the highest. And so again, this is just the overview process that we took to get to where we are tonight. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Long, and then also our math specialists. We have Ms. Lynn Good, Ms. April Smith, as well as this is Annette Depper. And they're going to give you their educational perspective on the textbook that we checked. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Long. I am a math teacher at Cluster Spring Elementary. I've been teaching for the last thirteen years. So I was asked to speak about some of the things that I would use from the textbook in my instruction. And so one of the things that I noticed in the textbook is that it had an opportunity to warm up where you're more so having a conversation with your students instead of jumping right into the computation into the math. And so here they have questions like, what do you notice and what do you wonder? So on the textbook, there's a picture, they're in color. And so it's just a conversational piece. And so I thought that this would be good in the classroom too because some students are not as confident in math. But if you give them a picture and say, what do you see? You know, you're going to get a lot more participation there when there's no wrong answer. Another thing is with the new standards, they are pushing towards us or our students being able to justify their answers. So it's not just to getting to the right answer, but how did you get there? And so, you know, when we were in school, it's, you had the number, it's the answer, or A, B, C, D, whatever. And so that has clearly shifted. And so we need to give students opportunities to explain their answers there. And so the textbook has that in there where they can do it. The workbook itself, it looks, I don't want to say empty, but there's a lot of space there where you're working out your problems and you're explaining your things, which in my perspective helps because otherwise you're getting scrap paper constantly. We use a lot of whiteboards, expo markers are expensive. And so if we have them on the textbook, then, you know, it's there for them to be able to work. Another thing with the new standards is modeling, which fifth grade has so much modeling and it is, it's a struggle because there are multiple different ways to model the same kind of problem. And so the textbook has a lot of different ways to model the problem. So there are snubbing lines, there are grids, and fill in the blank tables and graphs where the teachers have to create a lot of that stuff because we don't have the resources that show all the different ways that it's being assessed. And so this book being so closely aligned with the VDOE has lots of different ways that the questions are being asked. So going into that question variety, it's true, false, it's write-in, it's solving, it's modeling, it's fill in the blank. It's moving away from just giving the answer or choosing, you know, A, B, C, D. And so because that's how the test is being asked, we want to practice that in the classroom. And I think the book has a lot of opportunity for that. As far as the planning purposes for the teacher, coming up with questions and quick checks to make sure your students are on the right track can be time-consuming. And so KIDAM has, at the end of every skill and section, they have a section checkpoint where you can just check to make sure that your students are on track with what you're teaching. And then also for planning purposes, it provides a center for small group for every unit. And so that's obviously a challenge and time-consuming to come up with the centers to be able to show, practice, have the students practice all the things that they need to do. And so KIDAM is providing that as well.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Good, and I serve as math specialist at South Boston Elementary School. I'm not that many years I've been there. But from our perspective, many of the, you'll hear many of the same things. The alignment to the 2023 Virginia mathematics standards of learning is very close with KIDAM, much more so than the other series that we looked at. So we were very pleased with that, as Liz was saying. And she mentioned the way the books look, and you may have thought about that if you're flipping through those. There's a lot of blank space. But as a former special education teacher, that is phenomenal as well. In addition to the reasons that Liz was giving you about having more room to work out without, to grab scrap paper and all of those things, it's much less distracting for students, especially in special education classes and those students who have. especially in special education classes and those students who have those particular needs. And that is very helpful as well. Many of the small group, um, activities that are there help to give teachers some resources. They also suggest number sense routines, or number talks, as you've heard them called as well. And their online resources and the theme road available, those are easy to implement for teachers. It's a five to eight minute time where students are encouraged to develop the number sense skills, to build those communication skills, to build the justification, being able to explain why the right answer is correct. So those are some of the reasons for the mathematics specialists.
Hi, I'm Annette Dopper. I'm another math specialist in town. And I feel like Liz has, uh, she has summed it up. In addition to all of that, we would have access to an online platform where the PowerPoints are already created for our teachers. They can go and tweak what they need to tweak. The practice problems are created using real-world contextual problems. And that's one of the major shifts that we have now with our new math standards. So we need to put it into context. And then another note would be that we process standards are incorporated throughout the lessons in that book. So if you're looking at what the teacher has to do, I don't know if you've got a teacher's book or not. But if you're looking at the teacher's book, they talk about representations, reasoning, uh, communication, connections, problem solving. Those are the five process standards that we have to teach in our classrooms, that we have to incorporate. And Kid 'em does that in that book for us. We also have the assessments that are editable. The teachers can go in and adjust theirs as needed. They can choose between various questions and answer type formats, multiple choice, short answer. They can, the test can be administered online or with paper pencils. So if our internet goes down, we have a backup plan. With the online version, we have access to the audio accommodations. So if they have to do some special needs, their needs will be met. One additional thing, there are virtual manipulatives that can be added to that test. And that's something new that we have not had in the past. Teachers are able to opt to grade the test themselves, or they can have the computer do it for them. So lots of different options with this, with this book.
Um, my name's April Smith. I'm also a math specialist. Um, they also have a dashboard for data, and we dig into that a lot. So the dashboard is easily, easy to access, and then it offers, um, it'll tell you like the questions they missed. It'll separate it by SOL, by students. So there's different ways you can look at it to see if it was just a skill that everyone had trouble with, or was it just one particular student? Um, there's also an AI option that for those students that struggled with one particular SOL, AI will provide practice problems and immediately back to the students for that. So that kind of takes a little load off of the teachers. It also offers tier grouping. So it'll put your kids in a group where these students struggled with adding and subtracting, or these struggled with this. So that kind of plays into that center activity where it gives you a center activity, also gives you those tier groupings for the students. Um, uh, it has a variety of assessments. So it has the end of the unit summative assessment, which most textbooks do. This one also provides the formative assessments that we do at the end of every lesson, um, whatever skill or reviews in that day. Um, as Liz said, they had those checkpoints. That's kind of like what the checkpoints are, except format is to tell us, okay, did my kids get this lesson, or do I need to reteach or provide some other type of resource for them? Um, and then it's compatible with different platforms. So it's compatible with Google Classroom, which most elementary schools use. And it's also compatible with Canvas. I think some of our, um, elementary classrooms still use that. Teachers use it. Also compatible with Clever, which all three of those are things that we use in the elementary setting.
So I want to thank teachers and you all for sharing your perspectives and all the teachers that served to help the selection and review of all materials. So the cost, the one-time cost, um, for this adoption over five years, this outline here will be, um, a little four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. With that, teachers and students will have access to both digital and print resources. We have ongoing access to professional learning as well as, um, the tech support that you need throughout. We have a dedicated Kid 'em success manager who would have quarterly meetings with us. And we would like to ask you all for approval tonight so that we can secure the materials and schedule training curriculum work beginning in the spring of twenty-twenty-six so that we have from spring and summer so we have full implementation next fall.
Questions? Mr. Moore, do you think you can, Mr. Moore?
There's questions from this board. Um, I'm just reading your, your bullet points up here. And you said that, um, this students would have access to digital and print consumable workbooks. So, um, just so I understand fully. So each student does have access to a, you know, a book. It's not something to share. It's not only online access, you know, some of the issues that we pay to pay us. People have internet challenges at home, um, who struggles to be able to access some of that as a parent to assist their children at home. So I just wanted to make sure that I did understand that correctly, that we're going, if they will have their own workbook, or like, or like, or workbook access.
Yes, so you have that, um, symbol you have, they all have one each year. They will replenish that with the next year's students, I guess.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, um, from a parent's perspective, in the past years, at the end of the year, like, this many books that they end up learning. Um, and oftentimes there are barely any writing in them. So my question is, did people use it? Yeah. Will, do you think this is helpful, like, you'll actually be working out of it as a fellow and not the fellow that's simply used?
I feel certain that it does, at least for fifth grade. I've only taught fifth grade for the last thirteen years. But the two previous textbooks that we have used, um, since I started teaching, they didn't seem to be as closely aligned with the standards. And so, uh, the first year that I was teaching, I just would be able to use like one or two questions from this page. But then you may have to go fifteen pages away and then, well, we can't do this, but, you know, we can use this bottom. And so it was a lot of picking and choosing. And so to be completely honest, I just stopped. And I found my own resources and, and taught from that just because I didn't feel like it was as closely aligned where I think Kid 'em had like a nine in the five to in some grade levels, a hundred percent, um, alignment, yeah.
Mr. Clay, then I think Mr. Post had a question. Mr. Clay?
Um, thanks for putting this together. This is what we need, is collaboration like this. I, I like this. You guys are in the, you're in the war. So we, we're not in the war, you guys are. And, and, and that's what I, that's what I preach when I tell people, we need comments from you guys. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Post, if you have a comment before I ask for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bring up, bring up my dead horse because I need to get some clear understanding. I still feel, and maybe you can help me, says, six of you guys looked at this book, right? Six of y'all looked at, plus whoever, uh, came from the state. Do you think that they put some things in here that would help the students make up that two years that they lost?
I think the book has, um, the aligned resources for the students now. But in addition to that, I always say our best resource is our teachers. So I think the textbook and the teachers' use of that, in addition to remediation time and other things they have. The textbook alone is not going to do it. But our strongest resource is the teachers and the instructional assistance that helped them. And I think that is what will help us close the gap.
Well, the same thing you said, the book won't teach them, but it's, we get in the book, so we get some structure on what we want to do, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if the structure is set up to make them look a little ahead for a couple of years, won't that be used by the teachers to kind of bring our kids up a little bit?
It will.
Um.
It will. They will, they will work hard with.
How many?
I mean, they, they, the, the textbook has the resources that, that would help support it. VDOE has said it's, um, up to ninety-nine percent aligned, um, in different areas and all in different grade levels. And that's why we really, we take the feedback we got from the teachers before when we had the H and H with the reading. And that's why we're trying to get the professional development in place in the spring. Um, because that was the feedback of the teachers. So they said they wish we had it earlier. So when they have it in the spring, that will give them the spring. Then we have a group of teachers who come in the summer who do curriculum work. And they will have the summer to let it marinate, um, to, and the teachers work in the summer, if, if, if people don't realize that. And so they will be working hard in the summer, and we just want to make sure we can get it in their hands as soon as possible so that they can be adequately prepared to help our students grow.
My only problem is I'm going to make sure that you six guys understand that we've got to use that to make sure that we help those kids get their two years back. That's, that's my only aim. So, and that's, that's done. That ain't all for me. So I don't have it, but thank you about everybody else in there. And they have some. And I appreciate that you look for time, thirteen years, one person wouldn't even tell us. That's okay. But we appreciate you guys doing that. We really appreciate you doing this. I just want to keep in mind, you know, what if I said, are we going to be, be trying to get them back from their two years?
Or we have a motion and a second. Let's move to discussion.
Yeah, oh, oh, we can't move to discussion because I had this up to tweet before we passed motion.
I thought this was, we need to be talking about adoption of the textbook. That's what's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Say what you desire. Get a motion, a second.
Before you come, Mr. Post, the inch bottom. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the textbook, say aye. Aye. I suppose say no. Motion here.
Thank you.
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, I move at the board convene into closed, into a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. Personnel, the appointment presentation, and salaries of specific division employees as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia. Disciplining specific students of the school division as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A two of the Code of Virginia. Protection of privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A four of the Code of Virginia.
Motion, you want, you want to close second? Second, Miss Collins, in discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close say no. This part of the meeting.